Good evening, everyone. It's Thursday, December 8th. Calling the Town of Hingham Board of Selectmen to order, meeting to order. First matter on the agenda is approval of the minutes.
Can we defer them? Something I had added didn't quite make it, so just a sentence.
All right. We'll wait until next year, next time. Public comment. Audit Committee. Welcome, gentlemen and ladies. Right here for our annual chat.
Yes, yes. Good evening.
Good evening to you.
Thank you for the opportunity to come before you to present the town's audit reports. First thing I would like to do, if I may, is to introduce the committee members. So the volunteer town committee members are myself, George Dinas, the chair, and we have Rob Scheckel, who's in the audience, and Mike Dwyer, who is also in the audience tonight. George Alexiados is not able to be with us this evening, but he is our final member. Representing the town on the committee are our administrator, Ted Alexiades, and the Assistant Administrator, Tom Mayo, and of course, the town accountant, Sue Nickerson. And with us this evening, representing Powers &amp; Sullivan, our auditors, is Michael Nelligan. And the committee also has two liaisons from the advisory committee, and those are James Sharkansky and Kristen LaCroix. So as I said at the beginning, I'm here representing the audit committee to present the town's financial statements, federally required single audit, and the management letter. The audit committee is charged with the responsibility to review the audit process, including the annual financial statements and reports prepared by our auditor. The committee met on four separate occasions to review the following reports as prepared by Powers &amp; Sullivan. First report is the Town of Hingham Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, otherwise known as the CAFER. Second report is the Management Letter Discussing Internal Controls, the Ongoing Status of Previously Reported Items, and a Review of Upcoming Regulatory Changes. And the last thing we reviewed was the federally mandated single audit report. The key findings in these reports confirm that the auditors did not identify any deficiencies in internal controls that were considered to be material weaknesses. They had no material disagreements with management, and the audited financial statements received an unqualified opinion, which is the best opinion that a government unit can receive. It indicates that the financial statements were prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and that they are fairly presented in all material aspects. These documents are before you, and I would be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dinas.
Well, any questions?
Thank you for the work you do. Appreciate that. It's a little beyond me with the technical world, so I always appreciate when someone can explain it. In terms of the news, great, by the way, but in terms of the internal controls, we were just, I was chatting earlier, just trying to get it up to speed on that. Is that a normal letter that we receive, or there's, in terms of changing regulations, so to speak, that we receive?
Yes.
I'll defer to Mike on that.
It's a normal process, but there is a new requirement that communities who receive federal funds redocument their internal control process. The Department of Education has provided the school department with a template to use, and I met with the school business manager several months ago, and he is, has that all in place and ready to go. It's being implemented, as we speak, during this fiscal year. So I expect that that comment will be moved out of the report next year. We put it in virtually all of our clients who receive federal funds. We put that in as a comment to advise you, basically, that next year, we're going to be asking that same question, and if it's not implemented, it'll be a significant efficiency. I don't expect that will happen here, because I know that they're already in the process of implementing it. So I expect that comment will go away next year.
That's great. I brought that up, because in case someone at home maybe had a question similar or needed the information, but thank you very much, Mike.
You're welcome.
Yep.
I would also thank all of you who are seated at the table and in the audience for all the great work. I don't know if this is a question for the audit committee or Ted, just kind of at a 20,000-foot level, one thing that's mentioned here is a change in Government Accounting Standards Board, or GASB, that's going to affect our OPEB, and that is going to be, actually, it's going to affect every community. And I just wondered if we might, you know, give a 50,000-foot look of what that's about.
Well, I would certainly, I'll let Mike detail out for you. You will be getting the OPEB report, along with Sue has arranged for the actuary, who does our OPEB study, to come in front of the board and detail its findings, which are significantly different than previous years for you, so you could have one meeting focused on just that issue of OPEB, because it is so detailed. But I don't know if, Mike, you want to detail that being heard?
The new GASB is going to mirror the GASB that we implemented last year for the pensions. It's going to require that the OPEB liability be brought from back in the back where the notes are, up onto the Statement of Net Position, and that liability is going to be recorded on the books. It's going to probably cause your unrestricted net position to be a negative number, and that's going to be the same for virtually all the communities in Massachusetts, and pretty much everybody in the country. There are certain disclosures that the actuaries have to provide for deferred inflows and outflows, similar to what they provided for pensions, but it's not going to change the liability any. The liability will pretty much stay the same. It's just going to be reported differently.
So it's going to have, by virtue of where it's being reported, it's going to have a little bit more visibility?
Absolutely.
And I would just add, for purpose of the audience, because we're sort of talking alphabet soup here, so I apologize. OPEB is our other post-employment benefits, and for us in the Town of Hingham, it's retiree healthcare benefits. And this is something that many years ago, actually, in the throes of a very difficult financial time, we said, you know, we as a town have to start saving and funding this liability. I think we are one of the first communities in the Commonwealth to do so, and while certainly the liability is a big number, my sense is that relative to a lot of other communities, we may be in relatively better shape, because we have been, if you look in the operating budget, we've been contributing, on average, $900,000 every year towards that contribution. But I didn't realize that there would be a meeting totally devoted to OPEB. That makes sense, so thank you.
You know, the new report is quite different from the old report, and there's some implications for the board to consider, so we figured it would be best to be focused on one specific issue.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, lady. Anybody from the public want to chime in?
I just have a few concluding remarks. Just, so first, I would like to say that it has been a pleasure working with the members of the committee, and I thank them for their willingness to serve the town. The audit committee would also like to thank Ted, Tom, and Sue, along with the countless others who work for the town and who had a hand in bringing together our CAFER and financial statements. Hingham is very fortunate to have Ted, Tom, and Sue, and we are all well-served by them. My thanks also to Michael Nelligan and the Powers &amp; Sullivan staff for their professionalism and timeliness in completing the audit and the reports. And finally, there are two additional items that I would like to present to the board. First, the audit committee would like to publicly acknowledge George Alexikos for his long-term membership on this committee. George is leaving the committee this spring, and his wisdom and guidance will be missed. His departure will reduce the committee to three members, or two less than is outlined in our charter. And we encourage the board to fill those two open slots. I think it's important, it's a valuable committee, and having five members instead of three or four encourages a diversity of discussion. Finally, the 2017 audit will be the last one performed by Powers &amp; Sullivan under their contract with the town. The committee, as mandated under its charter, will ask the town administrator and will work with him to prepare an RFP for audit services and solicit bids from qualified audit firms with the goal of having a new contract in place early in 2018. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dinas. And in line with your request, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Douglas J. Farrington to the audit committee for the Town of Hingham.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So now you have a new colleague.
Asking, receiving.
Mr. Farrington is in the back of the room, so if you head out, you can say hello.
That's a full three-year, right?
This wasn't just a response to my asking.
We just, we moved quickly.
We moved quick.
We moved quickly.
It's called responsive government.
But that's it for tonight.
All right.
Yeah, there should be a vote on the agenda.
On that note, I'll make a motion to accept the financial statements and management letter as submitted.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Have a good holiday, and thank you for all your hard work.
Merry Christmas. Happy Holidays.
Okay. At this point in time, we are going to continue with the budget hearings. And tonight, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 10. 10 different departments, and we'll work through them. The first one would be account.
I just slipped right over.
How are you?
So your town accountant budget, the summary would appear on page Roman numeral 8. And the first budget will, and their budget in the back of the book, the detail is on page 7. The accounting budget is being presented tonight as a $326,000, $362 budget request for '18, an additional request of $24,057. I've recommended that request, and total budget of $350,419. It's a $31,134 budget year-over-year. And while Sue will detail this position, I'll let you know that in consultation with Sue, I'll be recommending that this get moved from this budget to the healthcare budget, since this position will be funding healthcare initiatives.
The position is a part-time benefits administrator. I believe it's part of the PEC agreement that they wanted a dedicated benefits administrator. Since we are going to the GIC, it is imperative to have strict deadlines, and everything is original paperwork. We can't fax, we can't email, so we're putting in for a part-time benefits administrator.
When we had examined the move, the healthcare move that you folks voted a couple weeks ago, I had Sue talk to other communities who have made that transition, and the message we got from every single one of them is, you need to have a dedicated benefits coordinator. Every employee will have to re-enroll for the healthcare. They will have to, and part of that re-enrollment is they will have to essentially go through an audit. They'll have to prove, you know, marriage, children, birth certificates will have to be created, and so all of that paperwork has to be moved forward to the GIC. If someone doesn't get enrolled properly, then they're precluded from joining the GIC, and that would require the town to figure out some other way to manage healthcare for that person, which would be rather expensive for us. So we really need to get this done and get it done right. The shift I'm making is I'm putting it in the healthcare budget instead of the accounting budget, because while Sue might be running the position, this is a pure healthcare cost. The person is solely there to support the enrollment of the membership, and it's an eligible expense.
Is this going to be ongoing headcount, or is this for the period of time in which we're making the transition?
This will be ongoing into perpetuity, because unless the GIC moves into a computer world at some point in time, every year, we'll have to have an open enrollment. All of that is manual, and we have a little bit of a second open enrollment as the teachers come in in September, so, and we have new hires then. So in both cases, something we discussed with the school department, 2/3 of the employees are the school employees, and so they just don't have the resources to manage that transition, and neither do we.
I think it's sensible to move the request into the group insurance line. I would just ask for us, and I see some of our advisory colleagues in the audience, I would just want to make sure that this is an additional request, and that it sort of maintains that status as we go through the budget process, particularly because this is a personnel cost. And so, you know, we, you know, a lot of times with the group insurance, we just kind of say, that's the number. This is the first time that there's dedicated personnel, so I think it would be important to sort of maintain that.
Absolutely.
It's going to stay right there for now.
Thank you.
So Ted, just a quick question on that. Just so I understand it, so you're going to transfer it to healthcare, so will we, at some point down the line with this budget, not see it here?
Yeah, you'll, essentially, the budget you'll ultimately be presented with for the accounting department will be the $326,362. That was the bottom request, and this additional request will go on to the healthcare as an additional request.
Thank you.
Also on this, you'll be receiving a reserve fund transfer request, because we'll need to fund this position effective, essentially, March 1st, and Sue will start hiring soon for that with your approval. The open enrollment period for the GIC programs is April 3rd to May 4th or something?
They're going to do a benefits fair in April.
And they've already established those dates for all the communities within the Commonwealth, including, you know, Hingham, since we've joined, and so we need to have someone ready for that process.
Okay. Any other questions?
And just to let you know, the expenses are level-funded, and so is the town audit.
All right. The next budget for the accounting department is a reserve fund. It appears in your budget book on page 6, and in the summary on the same page.
The reserve fund, we're level-funding at $550,000. The town's financial policy has us having 0.75% of total annual expenditures to be put aside for a reserve fund for extraordinary expenses, and the $550 is approximately about 0.74% of total annual expenditures.
And how are we tracking this year, Sue?
We haven't had one yet.
Oh, I shouldn't have asked.
You shouldn't have asked. Since Ted just said, I'll be going for one, we haven't had one yet. But the snow hasn't flown yet.
And I would just mention, for the benefit of the public, this is, what this does is this, this fund allows that if something extraordinary happens, we don't have to convene a special town meeting, but all of these appropriation requests are subject to the approval of the advisory committee, and there's a structured process around that, so, which we all follow.
Very good. All right, so the next budget would be a little further back in your budget book, debt service. It appears on the summary sheets on page Roman numeral 13. X111. I don't know my Latin as well.
Remember that from last year.
It's a habitual block. And in the detail on page 173, you'll see the short and long-term debt, tax-exempt debt. I want to draw your attention to page 175. Sue has started to break out at my request, an item we're going to call unused, non-excluded debt capacity. Right now, we have the number targeted at $18,267. That is essentially the amount of debt capacity in the 18 budget that would drop off based upon payment of principal amounts. If we didn't account for this this way, then what would happen is, and what's been happening is, as debt drops off, that budget capacity gets swept into all the other operating budgets. And then you folks come to me and say, we have a large capital project, how can we fund it? Now, well, your debt, well, your debt's been dropping off, and we thought we'd use that, but it's not being reserved. So what we're going to try to do here, going forward, is leave the debt budget alone with respect to debt that's within the budget, not tax-exempt debt, which is excluded from Proposition 2 1/2, because that has a separate revenue source, but the debt that the town has to eat within its operating budget, that amount, we're going to keep that level-funded at the same amount every year going forward, and we're going to show you as a different amount underneath it, the amount that drops off each year. So, for example, you could have a $2 million debt budget one year, and then the second year, if you've paid off $50,000, you'd have $1,950,000 and $50,000 of unused capacity. The following year, if you paid another $50,000 off, you'd have that same $2 million debt budget, but you'd have now $100,000 of debt capacity. And so what will happen is, each fiscal year, this $18,000 won't be used this year, unless you earmark a new project for it, and it will revert to fund balance at the end of the year. But it will also grow as years go by, allowing you to eventually fit one of the capital projects into this debt service, without having to go back and cannibalize into the budget that has used up that capacity.
And so the debt, the debt service in the forecast?
Won't change.
Includes, reflects this?
Correct. Correct.
That's great.
So I think this year, $18,000, you know, not going to be able to do a lot with it, but usually you pay off somewhere between $18,000 and $50,000 a year in debt service. So you're paying your principal off, just like you pay your mortgage off. And what this will allow for is, next time you're at the table, a year from now, you could see this number be $60,000 or $70,000. The year after, it'd be, you know, $110,000, $120,000. And as that number starts to grow, you will be able to allocate it to another capital project, and you know you have a dozen capital projects out there, so.
Questions?
I think that is a, it's a very helpful, it's a very helpful way to document this, given the large number of capital needs in the town. And as we're looking at operating budgets that are kind of growing by like 4% a year, you know, we know that our revenue growth is not going to be potentially 4% this year. And, you know, as you think about it, we've sort of got, you know, we've got capital projects, we've got operating needs, and we also have people that don't want their taxes to go up. So how you balance that three-legged stool is difficult. I think this will give us some visibility, and it'll help us make decisions that will keep all those three things in mind. Just a quick question about the debt service. I know in the last few years, we've done, and Jean Montgomery does a great job at refinancing a lot of our debt. Do we, are we comfortable with all the underlying interest rates on all of the debt that we're carrying right now, or do we see potentially any refinancing opportunities in the next year?
Probably not, as rates have just ticked up recently, so unlikely that we'll have significant refinancing opportunities. And the only ones that are really eligible for it are still a few years away, because we don't refinance for the first 10 years. And so most of the big issues that are out there are out there for longer than 10 years right now. So I would say probably not.
And we have very little.
But we'll look anyway. Every year, we have the, our financial advisors, capital markets advisors goes through our debt schedule twice a year and looks at all potential refunding opportunities.
And I would, I would just point out, before we leave the debt service, and I think it's, I think it's Roman numeral 19. I'm not as good with my Latin, but I would just point out, there's a debt, there's a debt service graph in there, and, you know, another consideration for debt service is the financial policy that the advisory committee set, and so we're still a little bit above our debt service capacity. I think we kind of cross over the line in 2020. And again, it's another consideration as we look at, as we look, as we look at the timing and the timing of capital projects and the number of capital projects we take on.
Thank you for pointing that out.
All right. Your next budget is group insurance. It appears on page 177 in your detail. All of these budgets will appear on Roman numeral 13 in the front for a summary.
We'll go with the 13, because details are much higher, or at least group insurance was.
So group insurance is being recommended at $6,863,728. We spent some time talking about this in your earlier meetings. It's a $331,727 reduction year-over-year, 4.61%, and it's the direct result of the town moving from the Mayflower Group into the GIC, where we're going to realize lower rates. As a 50/50...
That was because we were going to go Mayflower, the recommendation. That's why it's so much.
As you know, we're a 50% employer match system, so the savings will accrue equally to the town and to the employees participating in the system. Your next budget, no questions, on page 179, is unemployment compensation. The request of the department, Sue, was $330,000. I'm sorry, workers' comp, yeah, workers' comp first, 179. $330,000, same amount year-over-year. As you know, we put this into a trust fund, and we pay our claims out of there. You can see the detail of the trust fund on page 179. Actually, I'm sorry, on page 180. See that we have a slight surplus, $63,000. Not, nothing, nothing to be excited about. It's, could be a little larger, but certainly within ranges that we can live with. It's trending throughout the year. Do you, Ian, want to add anything?
Not if I don't have any questions. We do have, we did settle a claim, and that took away that $63,000. It was lower than what we anticipated, which was good. We do have a couple more that might be coming up.
You know, and for the boards and for the public's edification, we're self-insured.
So if I read there right, was, I know, I don't want to get into the amount, is to settle an amount more than the 65, 63, I mean?
No, it was less.
So we had, what is our balance at this point?
Well, as of the end of June...
That's the end of June.
We were at $63,000, so...
And now we got $330 for FY '17. Right now, we're probably about 50% used.
So we're running about $30,000 a month, and we're keeping, you know, pretty much close to our numbers on those.
Okay.
Your next budget is on page 181. It's unemployment compensation. Again, standard request of the department of $30,000, funding the entire amount. One thing that's a point of confusion sometimes for folks is that, you know, we're not laying people off, yet we have unemployment expense. We're, again, self-insured for unemployment. We pay dollar-for-dollar every benefit. We don't pay a percent of payroll like the private sector does. It's one of the requirements, a municipal government. And so a lot of times, we receive unemployment claims when people who have left our service go work someplace else, and then subsequently get laid off. That charge comes back to us because their earnings were over that time. And so even when we're in a period of full employment and not laying people off or reducing labor force, we'll still have this expense at some level.
Given the actual in both FY '15 and '16, are we comfortable at this point with the departmental request?
Well, Sue and I talk about this regularly. If we knew that you were planning a reduction in labor force, and we could quantify that payroll amount, then we could tell you exactly what to put in here. We don't know who's going to leave, and where they're going to go, and whether or not they're going to stay employed in that place, so it's virtually impossible to predict this, other than looking at past history and saying, you have these percentage of claims. When you look at the past history, you see some years you don't spend anything, and some years you spend a little bit more. Again, it's haphazard, not something you can really budget. Your next budget is the employee benefit groups of contributory retirement, Medicare, insurance, and OPEB. They appear on pages 78, 82, and 104, respectively. Sue, you want to take them through the pencil?
Okay. The contributory retirement, $4,221,102. It's a $191,319 increase, or a 4.75% increase. This is right off our actuary schedule that we had just had done as of January 1st, 2016. The contributing factors of the increase is, we went from $12,000 base to a $13,000 base, and unfortunately, the retirement system lost some money last year, so we had to recoup that with increased contributions.
So as you know, the retirement system is... So as you know, the retirement system is fully invested in the pension reserves investment trust run by the PRIM Board, which also manages the state teachers and state employees. We've been a full member of that system since the early 90s, so we'll live in, we'll have success in their investments. One of the things the retirement board is doing is beginning to lower the actuarial assumption of investment returns, since we know that an 8% long-term target is unlikely. And that's going to continue to put upward pressure, because if you're not earning as much, then that means you'll have to pay a little bit more. So they're trying to ameliorate that shift from about 8% down into the lower 7% range without just dropping all at once. Every time they have a period of gains, they lower their rate. And I don't know this year if you were able to lower it because the gains weren't there.
No, we didn't lower it at all.
But that's the direction they're heading, long-term. I don't think it's something that has to happen every single year to get to where you need to be.
Any other questions?
No.
Next one, mandatory Medicare. $852,750. It is a $110,250 increase, or 14.85%. If you remember last, at the end of last year, I had to come for a significant reserve fund transfer for this. Right now, the 852, taking the salaries that we have now in the budget will be sufficient. But if anything increases, this is a direct result of all, you know, payroll salaries. It's a 1.45%. So if any salaries increase dramatically, then either this needs to increase a little bit more, or I'll be back for a reserve fund transfer.
So eventually, this will be 1.45% of total payroll. It's not, because the Tax Reform Act of 1986, which instituted this, exempted employees hired prior to January 1, 1986. We still have a group of those. And every year, as we move forward, some of them retire, we replace them with a full position, a new position, and we wind up paying the tax on that full salary. And there have been years where we haven't seen retirements, and we've seen this number flat, but I think we're in a period now where we're going to start to see this for a couple more years.
And so if we add any headcount to the budget this year?
All headcount increases this cost by 1.45%.
So I think in a year when I think we know that things are going to be close and things are going to be tight, as this board and the advisory committee is looking at personnel decisions, we need to understand the impact on this line, because at the end, it always gets down to about $50,000, and
However, you know, again, $100,000 position is only going to
Right.
Be 1.45% of that, so a fairly de minimis amount. The real change is, is the turnover of employees. When we see the employees who've been serving for 30-plus years, they get to retirement, you know, all that payroll shifts. And that's what you're seeing right now. You're just, you know, you're going through waves. We had a period where we weren't seeing a lot of retirements post the financial collapse, where people were sheltering in place. Now you're starting to see people retire, make, go on with their lives, and make plans as they've recovered from that debacle.
Sue, I have a question. I deal with Medicare and similar areas, but the 1.45%, is this, is this how we came up with the budget figure for this coming year?
I took all the salary items in the town administrator's recommendation, and yes, I did.
And that's our shares, so to speak?
So, yes, so far. There's a little built-in, because we also do have to pay for police details. Anybody who does police details, we do have to pay the Medicare tax, too. But all the budgets aren't in yet, so it could shift.
So a little, this is somewhat beyond our control of the set figure, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Next budget, property and liability insurance. I recommended $635,250. It's a 5% increase. And basically, I did talk to our property insurance, and they said a 5% would be adequate for right now. We don't go out to bid until, you know, July, so we just built in a 5% increase.
84.
And the last one is other post-employment benefits. Per the town administrator, I am using the amount on our last actuary valuation of $814,175. It is a $19,112,000 increase, or 4.75. I do have for the board our actuary valuation as of June 30, 2016. And as Ted had said earlier, that we will have our actuary from KMS in January, and she will go over this whole report, because it has dramatically changed.
One of our challenges is going to be figuring out how to fund our new operating liabilities. OPEB numbers have changed, as Sue indicated, dramatically, by the tune of a couple of million dollars. And so there's some underlying assumptions that have changed. I felt that it would probably take up too much of your meeting to go through OPEB. It might not be enjoyable for everybody. So we'll have a special meeting where we bring in the actuary, and we can really get into the new changes. Two changes that drive it is a concept of inherent risk, where we have to figure out how to charge the system from an actuarial point of view for costs of retirees in their last years of life, with the concept being that even though groups pay fixed prices during the year for their, for their health care, those costs of care that are dramatic in your last couple of years of life, which we know actuarially to be the case, are being subsidized somewhere throughout the whole system, is the methodology, the theory behind it. And it's a little complex. In addition, they've changed the mortality tables yet again. So third change in the last decade. No changes in the first, in the previous 20 years, but three in the last decade. So we're learning something about mortality, I guess, and learning it regularly. Those are dramatic changes to the system, and before we start thinking about how we can fund it, we got to have more conversation about it, because it's some, they're large numbers. And to fund, fully fund OPEB this year would require you to either come up with a significant new revenue source, or to begin reducing your services, which are people. Given that the number has gone from one, from 800,000 to 1.3 million to 2 million, back down to 1.3, into 9, I don't think I could recommend to you changing employment statuses for people to meet a liability that's moving in such a different direction. Could you imagine if you, you know, laid off enough people to come, to deal with a $2 million liability, and the following year, you found out that liability went down? Because that's what we found out, you know, four years ago, when we did the actuarial study two years later. So when, when that's changing like that, I think we have to have a new, longer-term approach to how to address that liability. We've also made some plan design changes by moving into GIC, and that will affect those numbers. All of that will happen in the next revaluation, so we need to talk to the actuary about that, too. That's why we've postponed it.
I'm done.
Hey Sue, just before you leave the table, I just want to thank you for all your work on the audit, on the CAFER, and, and just supporting all of the very important day-to-day work and supporting the advisory committee.
Oh, thank you.
Very, very much appreciated.
Well, I'll tell you, I have to thank you guys, Ted, and all town departments for being fiscally responsible. It makes my job a lot easier.
You make our job easier as well, because it's going, bringing this all together and laying that and explaining it to us is very helpful. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Every year, I tell you this, and I can tell you this again this year. Thank you, Sue. This is one less amount of work I've had to do on the CAFER and the financial statements. I think I've done the least amount I've ever done in my career here, and you've taken almost all of that work on yourself. And, you know, I lived those financial statements for two decades, so it's really nice to know that I've
And I still get, and I still get that award.
She gets that award, and it comes in great, and it's just enormously rewarding for me to see that. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Really appreciate you.
Thank you.
So we had a lot of big budgets there. We'll move to a, another budget next. It's not quite the same size. You guys have spent a lot of time in the service area. Bearcove Park budget, do we have folks from Bearcove Park here?
Yes.
Welcome. The Bearcove Park budget appears on page 43. The summary appears on, I believe, page Roman numeral 8, again. Sorry, that's 13. I'm sorry, it appears on page 9, Roman numeral IX. And the budget is, they didn't give me a lot of work to do this year. The request was $24,878, $65 decrease over the prior year, and I approved it. I'm recommending it to you. Want to add?
No, I think it's pretty, pretty straightforward. We kept it level. You know, we hit our target last year, and it looks like we're on track for it this year, too. It's our time employee and a truck and the other rods and ends that we have down there to take care of, so.
I will let you know that the budget is just a small part of their process and things that they do. They still work with other entities. I know you're working with the Trails Program and
Right.
Working with Conservation and CPC. So I don't want people to think that this is all they do, but this is a fairly straightforward part of their job. Okay. Questions from my colleagues?
Nope.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thanks. Information tech, oh, excuse me, town engineer? Don't want to call you a boarder there, Mr. Fernandez. Welcome. Thank you.
Hi, Roger.
The town engineering budget appears in summary form on page 11, and in detail on page 84. The budget request came in at $580,713. I recommended that amount. It was 1,220 dollar increase year over year. So again, another department that didn't really pressure me very much to come up with difficult decisions. Thank you, Roger.
You're welcome.
Did you fill your budget for me?
Like Ted said, not a lot of changes at all. In the past, I have come forward with you, sort of crying about what we needed to do with the roads, and that was usually a pretty large ticket item. And as you know, my responsibility is to talk to you about what I think needs to happen. It's your responsibility to tell me whether or not you can make it happen. But this year, that's not necessary. As you know, last year, we issued a pretty substantial, there was a bond issuance to sort of apply to the roads, and we've done that last year. So we continue to look forward to spending down on that money as well last year, this year. I would say sort of along those lines, we actually saw a $176,000 savings by doing that roadwork this year, because this year, we saw a substantial reduction in petroleum products, which is what asphalt and micro-surfacing and fuel obviously comes from. So in terms of timing, when the town elected to sort of borrow that money, it couldn't have gotten any better. We say, we say about 13 to 15% this year on our roadwork, and hopefully it'll stay there next year, so. That was, that's, that's all I have in terms of the budget. Other than that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
I don't really have any major questions. I want to, I want to thank you and
Oh, thank you.
For the, for the work. I will say that the years that I've been here at the roads have always been a discussion topic and finding ways to get things done, and it was nice to see that we collectively could do that. I know the folks that we've spoke to over the last few years, the roads have been, been done, and everybody's very happy. So I'm, I'm sure there's plenty of folks that are looking for roads to be done, and I'm sure we'll keep working on it, and I would, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Roger, could you just, you know, a lot of times when you come before this board, it has to do with the roads, but that's only, that's only a small piece of what you do. Could you maybe just highlight for, for us and for the benefit of the audience, some of the other projects that you've worked on for the town in the last year?
Sure.
So I know, and I'll, I mean, I know you've been very involved with the library and the roof.
Okay. So
Get out the horn. Let's go.
Let's, let's start in the harbor and work west, I guess. But, so, you know, the towns, there's initiatives, and actually Bill Reed is here with us today, and hopefully he can come up and speak, and we get to some other topic. But we've got the inner harbor walls, we've got, and then these projects we're working with both the trustees and the Harbor Development Committee. So we've got the inner harbor walls that need attention. We started looking at those from a permitting and construction standpoint, and there's actually some discussion will come up in more detail about that. You've heard some briefings from the committee and its chair. We've got a bath house that we, we received a grant for, that's $750,000. I actually had a meeting today to discuss that. So that grant and its application, its presentation is something that my office handles, so we're happy to report that we did get that grant. That's sort of old news, so we've, but that project now needs to happen, so there's work involved with that. We've got a 3A initiative that's underway. We're meeting with the design group, meeting with the state. So we expect to sort of start working on some of the models associated with that corridor improvement. We've got Derby Street that's underway. It's on the tip. That means it's funded. The hope is to be able to have that road out to bid in the late fall of, not late fall, prior to, and beginning of the next federal fiscal year, which is October 1st. So sometime in September to be able to put that bid packet out, so that we can start work on that road the following year. And that's a $5 million project, just to give you sort of scale. I know I've got members here at the library and working very actively with them.
I'm going to pause, Roger, for a second right here, because he just went past the Derby Street like really quickly, as if it was just one little thing he did. It required a modification of an intersection at Old Derby, dealing with private entities, dealing with the state, you know, dealing with engineers, getting people to understand how configurations are going to work, discontinuing parts of roads. It's not just working on Derby Street. So, you know, he won't tell you exactly all the details of what he's doing, but that is a gargantuan project all by itself, let alone all the other things. Sorry to interrupt you, keep going.
Well, I won't keep going, but I'll just, I'll
Before you go on there, though, I think we should also add in that Whiting Street and Gardner Street is part of that formula as well. To synchronize that work, as we anticipate that it will be done, is going to minimize the inconvenience and the impact on, on the residents as well as the passing motorists, too. So I very much appreciate the work that you've put in up there. Especially the work you've done with the South Angam Working Group, because, I mean, we're, we're collaboratively looking over the horizon decades ahead, and your assistance has been invaluable.
Thank you. And I just want to say, and I won't keep going here, but I just want to say in terms of those larger projects that I mentioned, the 750 and the $5 million, those are being funded by either a grant or state funds. There are other, town has other things that they have to consider whether or not they want to fund, but I don't want people to think, wow, if I, where's that coming? That's not, that's, it's your money, but it's still, it's from
It's your income tax dollars.
State coffers, yeah. So, anyway, I digress.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
You know, in addition, he's helping the library right now. He helped them with the library roof project. I could give you a dozen other small procurements that he's handled for us. So Roger's pretty busy. Keep him working.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roger.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work.
Thank you, much appreciated. I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's any other questions, but
They're good? Okay. Is there enough between? We're good. We're going to do that. Now, if you guys would like to take that out of order, Roger's also here to talk about the contract with Beals and Thomas. No need to keep you any longer than we have.
Well, I've got, I've got Mr. Reed in here, who's also poised, ready to come in and help. Thank you for taking this out of order, appreciate it.
Sure. Evening, Bill.
Maybe I could just put this in context. I came before you, I want to say, three weeks ago, four weeks ago. I had been before the advisory committee before that to describe the thought process that the Harbor Development Committee went through over an extended period of time to think about the initial report from Beals and Thomas about the condition of the wharves and how we should proceed on a sequential basis. And, and what we have before you tonight is, is the execution of that in the form of a contract, which Roger has worked up with Eric Loss and Beals and Thomas, to start with the Iron Horse Park wharf town, town pier, which of, of course, is one of the most visible. But I also shared with you that our committee was recommending that we need to go forward with the others as well. And I met with Ted yesterday, talked about an article that we will need to put into this year's warrant that would address going up to phase two for the other wharves, the other key wharves. key wharfs, Barnes, Veterans Park, and the former mobile station site, because we know that they all work in tandem. And so we will be back to see you in this budget cycle with respect to that article, but we'll be working that up here in the very near term. But that's the context.
So I just want to say, just for folks who might be watching this, what are you guys talking about? This is, the intent of this contract is to fund the engineering associated with doing the design and permitting for the front of the wharf at the Iron Horse, also known as Victory Park, right near the pier. So this would get things started. It does not fund construction, but it gets us started, it funds the full design and permitting required, but it also puts us in a position that if we, if a grant becomes available and they're looking for a project, and we will do that, this puts us in queue with the project that's ready to go, fully permitted and fully designed.
So this procurement is completely in order, all the procedures have been followed appropriately. I would have signed this contract myself, it was under fifty thousand. It's over fifty, and that requires board approval, so it's in front of you for that reason.
And I would just add that this is, the funding source of this is an article that was approved at last year's town meeting. And in fact, I would say that the committee and the Bathing Beach trustees have been very thoughtful about this money. I think it's to the committee's credit that there are funds available to do this work. And I think it's.
Two thousand and fifteen.
Or two thousand and fifteen. I think it speaks to how judiciously you've spent the money. Just a question, if we talked when you were here a few weeks ago about that there could be some economic benefit by doing some of this stuff together. You know, you've got the equipment out there at the same time and all that stuff. Will this work begin now, or will you wait until the outcome of town meeting to try to get some of those synergies?
Sure. So I'll mention, the one synergy we are taking advantage of, and this is based on the recommendation of our engineering consultant, is we know that when we look at any of these wharfs, we need to do borings and have a sense of what the substructure is underneath these wharfs. We have no idea, you know, a hundred and fifty years ago, did they just kind of throw old buggies into our old cars or whatever? So we need to know that before we're going to start any of repair work on these wharfs. So Eric Loss recommended, look for a little more than he had originally told us as it related to Town Pier. He can use the, a drilling contractor and a, what's the type of subsurface engineer to look at, geotech engineer, to look at all four of the wharfs at the same time. So that is the one, within the dollars that we had left from the Article thirty-one of two thousand and fifteen town meeting, we could accomplish that. So we're trying to fit, get as much for the dollar as we can. Roger, I don't know if there's anything you want to add.
Thank you very much.
Quick question. In the hundred and twelve thousand dollars, I understand, we've more town meeting from two thousand and fifteen, was this a subsequent bid, or is this an ongoing process with Beals &amp; Thomas?
So this is an ongoing process, but the original solicitation, it doesn't, the solicitation itself doesn't fall on the Mass General Law's Chapter Seven, the finer selection process. So we don't have to do what I'm about to describe, but we do this anyway. So we met with three or four different groups. Bill was involved in decision-making process. We had Ken Corson there. We had somebody, a staff member from Conservation who was involved. We had four groups present to us, talk to us about the project. So we went ostensibly through a solicitation process that you normally, statutorily, we don't have to do for this type of work, but we did anyway. So what you saw from Beals &amp; Thomas was the prioritization of the wharfs, the bathometric survey associated with the wharfs, everything to get us to this point. We're happy with all that, those services, with the option to continue the work at the town's discretion. And that's normally the way we, and the reason why we do that, if we're not happy with the service and we want to go in a different direction, we're not tied into anything. But the language is such that if we're happy with the service, the information, what we've gotten is satisfactory, we just continue with the work. And that's what we've done here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion, please.
I'll make a motion to enter into contract with Beals &amp; Thomas, Inc. for professional services for the Town Pier design and permitting as part of the wharf infrastructure resiliency improvements.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you both.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Your next budget is information technology. I invite your IT director, Steve Becker, up to the table. Welcome, Steve.
Hey, Steve.
So this is the first year for the IT budget as a separate stand, freestanding budget. It appears on page, the summary is on page roman numeral eight, and the detail is on page eleven of your budget book. What we've done here is pull the information technology budget out of the accounting budget, and we're going to maintain it as a separate budget going forward. And the reason we did that is last year, the, actually the year before, the IT budget exceeded the in total of the accounting budget. And one of the things you try to do in budgeting is if there's a subcomponent that's bigger than the whole budget, it's time to break it out. So we're going to break it out, and I'll let Steve walk you through the details. I'll tell you that the request came in at four hundred and fourteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. I approved that amount. It represents a twenty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollar year, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars year-over-year, six-point-four-one percent increase, larger than some of the other departments that we have increases for. No additional requests, but I'd ask Steve to detail the changes for you.
All right. First one is payroll. That increased by about ten thousand five hundred, and that was due mainly to projected step increases for the systems analyst position and the network technician position.
So remember, you hired a, you created a new position last year in the budget, network technician, so that was going to start on the lower scale, and you'll see increases each year as that position moves through.
And the other item is expenses. That increased about fourteen thousand five hundred, six-point-three-four percent increase, and that's mainly due to increases in service support agreements. And the service support agreements typically, a lot of them go up about five percent every year, and that basically just supports our kind of investment in all our software applications and hardware infrastructure that support the organization.
So for example, we purchased the Munis accounting software package in nineteen ninety-five for about a hundred thousand dollars. And our maintenance agreements on it the first year were close to twenty. And I remember some years, they increased by as much as twenty to thirty percent. I think that same package now is not a hundred thousand dollars, it's probably in the half-a-million-dollar range. And they actually try not to offer that to you. Instead, they try to offer you a.
Software as a service.
Software as a service. So I wanted to describe that to the board.
Well, right now, we're paying, we're housing the financial database in-house, and our support cost for that, that's the highest amount within our service and support agreements, and it's seventy thousand dollars a year. A portion of that is taken care of by the town, a portion is taken care of by the school department, depending upon which modules each town, school makes use of. I just received a quote from Tyler to move to a software as a service, a hosted solution for the exact same modules that we have housed in the database in the town hall now, and it was a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So it's about a forty-two thousand dollar annual difference to go to a hosted solution. So that's why we take care of it. And the administration portion, to keep it in-house, is, it's not a lot, and the savings are significant, so.
I appreciate, Steve, the work you're doing, obviously staying on top of the dollar figures, obviously helpful. And I will say that I do appreciate you being proactive. I know often we'll get emails or communications from you on things of importance, not only to the system and safeguards and so forth, and it's very helpful, so I appreciate you doing all those things.
Thank you. And I must say, I can't, I would never be able to do it without Kate Richardson. She's a critical asset, and especially this year with the early voting. She modified the town check-in database to be able to use it for early voting, and I think it helped out the town clerks.
Eileen was mentioning that she did a great job with that.
So when you see the things IT does from a public perspective, you'll see the webpages, our social media presence, but you also see town meeting check-ins. You know, that check-in process is something Steve and Kate developed with Eileen so that we could move people through. If you remember, a number of years ago, there were long lines, and Steve was able to create a package that was able to spread across a large number of groups and get people in there. Manage the Board of Health, software packages, manage the building inspector packages. And I think the real jewel in that organization is moving the town to voice-over IP before most organizations even really knew what it was. We've been on voice-over IP now for about fifteen years.
Correct.
And I think we were saving something about twenty-five thousand dollars a year on year one, and it's just the savings have continued to escalate.
Yeah, and as we continue to add on other municipal buildings in town, we did not need to increase as far as the communications T1s that we had. So we kept adding these on, and basically no recurring costs to the town.
And lastly, I would just offer you, computers can give people sometimes a little anxiety. And I think one of the, one of the, one of the things that Steve does, I think, so well and his staff, Kate Richardson, is when departments have difficulties managing their computer environment, it's the tone, the tenor, and the helpfulness that they approach the subject with that just really removes that stress level. Communication, I see, people don't fear calling IT, they're grateful when they're there, and that's really a product of you, and I wanted to recognize you in front of the board for that, Steve.
Thank you, Ted.
I would agree with that wholeheartedly. I think that my own experience with computer folks is invariably very calm. And when I'm calling, I'm usually flustered. And on those rare occasions when I've had to enlist your assistance, you've been very calm, and I certainly appreciate it. So thank you so much.
Publicly, I'm very calm.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Your next budget is elder services. I see our director, Barbara Farnsworth, here. The budget appears on page ten, page one-ten. The summary appears on page roman numeral twelve. I'm getting better and better at this. And the request came in at two hundred and thirty-nine thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars with a seventeen-hundred-dollar additional request that I recommended. Total budget of two hundred and forty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars represents a thirteen thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars or roughly six percent year-over-year budget.
Okay, thank you. First, I'd like to introduce Gail Ferring and Dick Pont, who are members of the Council on Aging, and they're here tonight.
Thank you for coming.
First, let me address the seventeen-hundred-dollar additional request. That appears in the dues line item. As you know, we are nationally accredited by the National Institute of Senior Centers. That's a process that occurs every five years, and in fiscal two-eighteen, our five-year process will need to be completed again, and that is the cost of doing that. I think, in thinking through that, the major benefit that I've seen with that is that it puts the staff and the council on aging together, all on the same page for the departmental operations. And then a secondary benefit I've noticed is that the way the Council on Aging is structured with three people coming off every year and three new people coming on every year, that there's a good education process for newer people coming on as to the accreditation. And it's a process that involves staff, council on aging members, constituents, and community partners. It takes probably a good six to eight months to complete that process.
And you do that process every?
Every five years, so two-eighteen.
Barbara, how many communities within our region do that?
I think currently in the state, there's only seven that are nationally accredited. Nationwide, there are approximately a little more than two hundred and twenty senior centers.
I would clearly equate this to the work we do with the CAFR. One of the few communities that does a CAFR, again, one of the few communities that puts itself through a rigorous self-evaluation process. And the benefits that Barbara gets to the organization, I think, are extensive. They get to compare themselves to the best of business, the best practices within the entire country. And that's, I think, one of the reasons why we have one of the better Department of Elder Services in the region and probably the country.
I think the other major increase in the budget is in the salary line item. Through Ted and David Basler, last year, they went through and sort of, we looked at the director's position and the work that was associated with that, and compared it to other communities and upgraded that position by one grade. So that is currently going through some of the step processes also.
Our quick question, not on that, but just on the seventeen-hundred, just so I understood, on the page one-ten, what line item is that?
That is under dues, the seventeen-hundred.
So on page one-hundred and ten, you'd see it on line item one-five-four-one-four-five-two-six-three.
Yeah, no, when you were explaining it, I guess I was looking for something else. So tell me again what that is.
The seventeen-hundred, that's the cost to do our application and to go through the national accreditation process. It's based on the size of your budget.
Got it, thank you.
And the senior tax work-off dollars, those come right out of meals tax now, Ted, is that?
Correct, they do.
That's okay. And Barbara, just for, you know, I think that the three of us had the opportunity, and you're very generous every year to invite us to your volunteer appreciation luncheon. And we get to see the many, many people, and I'm always overwhelmed by the number of volunteer hours, and I hope I'm not putting you on the spot by asking, but how many volunteer hours does the senior center receive in a year?
Generally, in a year, it's around ten thousand fifty hours of volunteer time.
And so I just want to put that in perspective for people, that that's, and I'm not this, I'm not this good at math, but if you divided that by the total number of working hours, that's several full-time people.
Five.
Five, thank you. And, you know, I would, I would not only thank you and your staff for creating such a vibrant volunteer pool, but also the many, many people who volunteer in just so many different ways. It is always so gratifying to see that luncheon and to see all the great people who are very generous with their time.
And I think one of the things that maybe the public doesn't understand is that it's not meaningless opportunities. I mean, it's really vibrant opportunities to keep people engaged in the community. When you see the senior van driving around town, those are all volunteers that do that, and that's not an easy task for people, as well as the reception staff in the offices is all volunteers. So those are some of the major components. And many of our instructors for classes are all volunteer.
One quick question. We were talking about volunteers, and I'm looking at the sheets, and it talks about work-off. In prior years, it's not listed in this year's budget, I'm just making sure.
Last year, we moved it into the overlay account. It's a line item that could have always come out of there, so trying to clean up many journal entries was an easy, we moved it over last year.
Makes sense, thank you.
I'd like to thank, on behalf of my mother-in-law.
We enjoy her.
She doesn't express it quite that way, but keeps her going, so thank you.
She quite likes the voice.
All right, get out.
Just say goodnight.
Thank you, have a great year.
You, too, Mary Christmas, have you all the best.
She does.
God bless her, right?
Your next budget is the Public Works budget, landfill recycling, and then you'll follow with sewer. I see Randy here.
Your budget book is bigger than our budget book.
All right, so the summaries appear on page roman numeral eleven, and the details, Public Works, will start on page eighty-seven. Randy presented me with a budget of three million, three hundred and six thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars for Public Works. Randy presented me with a budget of $3,363,833 for Public Works. He asked for an additional $50,000 in road maintenance, which is really for a stormwater process that he will detail for you, general road maintenance. I added $50,000 to his request for snow and ice, as I see that we're starting to move further and further away from our averages, our five- and 10-year average, which means we're just building in hidden liabilities to the budget. The total budget is $3.4 million, $6,383, a $202,252 increase year-over-year, representing 6.31%.
Well, the main increase of $50,000 is for the Phase II stormwater, which there are new requirements, and there's a new permit coming out. And in order to get the permit, we have to submit an NOI to the Notice of Intent to the EPA. We also have to update our town storm water management plan and update the illicit discharge detection and elimination program, along with everything else we do. The costs, basically, the estimates are, the NOI is going to cost around $10,000. The update of the stormwater management plan is $25,000. The illicit discharge detection is going to be around $15,000. And the reason these have to be updated is because the permit has been, well, it should have been, it's like an every-four-year permit. They haven't come out with a new permit in 13 years, so they've added additional requirements. And that's why we have to update all these portions of the program.
Can you tell us what the illicit discharge detection and elimination program is?
Sure. What that is, is what they want to make sure is that there's no illicit discharges. An illicit discharge is like a washing machine that dumps into a catch basin, things of that nature. They don't want any nutrients in there to get into the ponds and the ocean, which could cause an imbalance in the vegetation, which is not good for wildlife. So they want to, in order to do that, they're going to, we have to test the outfalls on a regular basis. We had to test the outfalls in the first program, within the first three years, and now it would be an every-year requirement to do testing on the outfalls in wet weather times and in dry weather times. And that's going to, the program's going to be, well, my estimates, it's going to cost another $65,000 next year. But this would, if we keep this $50,000 in there, it's going to cover a portion of that cost. We're going to have to buy test kits, we're going to have to train personnel to go out there and take the sampling, we're going to have to record-keep, there's all these new requirements that we're going to have to do, that these new plans are going to cover.
Is the town being asked to assume any kind of responsibility on storm scepter systems, requiring vacuuming or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of. That's not part of the program. If it's one of our structures, then we do have to do that, and we do do it. We'll hire a company, come out and do it once a year.
How many of those do we have?
I know of two. One is at the transfer station, one's at, down at Carlson Field.
Okay.
I recommended those additionals because I really, at this point in time, I don't see how you could avoid.
It's a mandate, right?
It's a mandate.
Following through the federal permit, so. Randy, did the chilp under, again, I was always making sure, I'm matching it up on the sheet on page 88, is it Drainage Services? Am I reading that wrong, is the $50,000?
It read in the road building portion under Drainage, yes.
Okay. And Ted, your $50,000, well, I may have been randies, but for the road, for the maintenance?
It appears in Road Building. You could see it on page 88. It appears in Drainage Services.
I saw that, yeah.
$50,000.
That's what Randy just said.
And the snow and ice appears, the snow and ice does not appear as an additional request, and the reason for that is Randy didn't make it, I made it. So even though it is an additional request, the way we process additional requests, the department heads give them to Sue to do that, and so she gives me the whole package. So this will be one we'll add in later.
Okay, I just want to make sure I wasn't missing it, but now I see why, okay.
So Randy, just kind of a question about, you know, as we're going through this, when there are increases that are being recommended, one of the things I try to look for is, you know, is there the ability, kind of within the budget, to absorb the cost in any way or do something? And one thing that I noticed is that if I look in Public Works, that the paving supply amount, if I compare kind of in fiscal year 15, we spent about $25,000, and next year, the request is for about 70. And I guess my question?
Is that under expenses or road building?
It's under Public Works expenses.
Okay.
And it's the paving supplies?
Paving supplies, yes. And, well, before you go, that line is primarily for line painting?
Okay.
And there's an increase in that? I budgeted for $65,000 last year.
Yep.
And $70,000 this year, because there's no new requirements that we have to, well, basically, we're going to have to paint other long line on the sides of roads, the gutter lines.
Bog line.
Yeah, the long line.
Mm-hmm.
Bog lines.
Okay.
And then there's the requirements, the crosswalks that we have.
Okay.
We're going to have to, and we haven't done those for all five years.
Okay.
Most of them. And then the other one is all the bike symbols and whatnot.
The sharrows, yeah. So I guess, as, you know, with Roger just being in here, as we get into, you know, over the next few years, we're going to be accelerating our road building and our repair. And so I guess my question is that, as we do that and we get more of our roads from kind of, you know, poor and failing, back into the good category, will that take a little bit of the pressure off your department in terms of kind of maintaining some of those roads and filling the potholes and?
Depends on the winters, and I guess it's yet to be seen.
Yep. And I'm not suggesting we budget for something that we haven't experienced, but intuitively, it would seem to me that somewhere in the next couple of years, we might, you know, part of the goal here is to fix the roads so that we have to spend less on the day-to-day fixing.
There may not be an increase in the budget when we get to that part, but it's going to level out.
That's, I guess.
The costs aren't going to go up.
Yep.
But as things progress, we won't be having to put more money into them.
Yep.
But honestly, as far as that road building budget, this is going to take up a lot of, I mean, we already spend approximately $100,000 already doing all the necessary things that we have to do, and that's sweeping the streets, cleaning the catch basins. Now we have to track and pay to get rid of the catch basins, where years ago, it was, we just put it into the landfill. And that's what the big increase was from $25,000 up to the $50,000, is that, that's about a $30, $35,000 cost every year, and that will progress.
Much of the increases in the Department of Public Works budgets for the last 10 years have been mandated increases. Things that they have to do, like stormwater, as opposed to expansion of services, except for the road building, which of course, we've done a lot more of.
So you collect all the refuse from the catch basins, put it in a pile, and ship it somewhere?
Yes.
We knew that cost was going to occur once the landfill closed, so.
It's about $40, $45 a ton.
No, it's not.
Which is quite a bit of money.
Yeah. You let it dry out before you ship it?
Absolutely.
Good.
We put it in the old salt shed.
Okay.
And so it has a cover, so we dry it out.
Nice, thank you.
I'm all over it.
All right. You have the right answer.
And I would just add that, you know, on the snow removal, I think last year, you know, we do a good job tracking the five-year, the 10-year moving average. The cost of removing snow in this town is going up, and if you look, I mean, obviously 15 was an anomaly, where we spent almost $2 million, but I think we're kind of kidding ourselves if we say we're going to budget $500,000 and, you know, kind of hope. And I think, you know, while the reserve fund is a way to account for unusual and extraordinary expenses, when you have a budget that's lagging your 10-year average, you could make the point that it's not unusual and extraordinary, not, a portion of it isn't. Some of it is just in budgeting the base. And I think one of the things we've tried to do with budgets like this over time is to perhaps, you know, where we can, add $50,000 and, you know, try to true it up over a couple of years. I would just say that if we don't do that this year, we're just kind of kicking the can to next year and making that a little more difficult. So, while I realize it's a difficult budget, I think that cost is there.
So this number, I mean, if you look, Mary, the five- and 10-year averages appear on page 21, Roman numeral 21. The five-year average is at almost $900,894. The 10-year average is at $786. You're a quarter of a million dollars under your budget.
Right.
You know, and yeah, we did, you're actually right. We did have a bad year a couple of years ago, where we spent in 15, 1.9 million. But we also had a year in 2012 where we spent $200,000. So that's why we call them averages. And most of these years exceed 500, so that just means that you're building a budget that has an inherent deficit. And so you're right, we, you know, we looked at this three years ago, when it was 150 away from us, and we just didn't have the resources to allocate in that way. Well, now it's 250 away, and if we don't start, it's going to start to get too far away from us, and it's going to hurt when you have to make the change eventually. And your strong fund balance is in large part a result of the work that you guys have done over the last six years to make sure that you don't have too many of these hidden liabilities, always draining your fund balance at the end of the year.
I'd like to thank you for putting up with the swap pile.
You're welcome.
I think that that's a very popular feature in town.
It is.
I'm sure it tests the patience of the highway, but.
We do the best we can.
I thank you for continuing.
You're welcome.
And Randy, it looks like in the landfill that the salary increase again is just contractual.
Yes.
So the landfill budget appears on page 94. I'll just give you the breakdown of the summary, because I know that some people like to hear those exact amounts. If I don't read them, I usually hear about it tomorrow morning. The landfill budget request came in at $1,353,915. I recommended the entire amount. It's a $34,809 increase year-over-year, 2.64%. Another budget the town has done very well with, Randy has regularly been able to renegotiate the rates on the hauling of our refuse to sea mass twice in the time I've been administrator, and each time substantial savings, so something he keeps a close eye on.
I would also just say that at the transfer station, you and your team do a great job at making all kinds of places possible for people to dispose of, you know, whether it's textiles to be given to charitable organizations, recycling, appliances, different things like that. You're helping us behave, you're helping us with behavior change. And I would also say that with all those different aspects to the transfer station, the flow, it's easy to get in and out of there, everything is very, very well organized, and I think that really just, it helps. I noticed that, you know, at certain times, especially on the weekends, you know, there may be a little bit of a backup because of high-volume times, but the way you've got it laid out, it, you know, everybody really does move through. And so thank you for that as well.
You're welcome.
Randy's nice.
Recycle, saves money.
I'm noticing, though, that when there is a queue, people are parking over to the right, and they're cutting through the queue and the moving cars. I say nothing, but I observe. I don't know what the solution is, I've been trying to figure that out.
We'll take a look at that.
But when a queue's out to Hobot Street, people get impatient, and they don't want to wait. It's usually five or 10-minute wait.
It's a.
I try to go on Thursday or Friday, just to avoid that whole thing.
It's the design of the facility.
I hear you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's too far up front.
I'm there on the weekends a lot, and it's not that bad of a way to, you know, sometimes you'll hit a tough time, but, I mean, everybody's pretty calm about it.
As if it's before or after the Patriots game, I think.
Well, not during, maybe halftime.
I guess it just depends when you go, man.
All right, the last budget Randy's here for you tonight is the sewer budget. As you know, we manage the sewer department through consolidation agreement, and my understanding is the Sewer Commission voted the budget.
Sewer Commission did vote the budget.
And the budget appears on page, summary on page 11, and the detail on page 99. It's a $2,864,788 budget, $229,370 year-over-year increase. It is an 8.7% increase. A bulk of that increase is in areas that the Sewer Commission has no real control over.
Yeah, the big increases here are the rates from the MWRA, which they come out with an assessment every year. Last year was 10% for the rates, and this year went down to 8%, so that's not that bad. And the intermunicipal agreement with HALL, that's up to 30%. It was 30% last year. I did talk to them about this. They are having, they had a difficulty with their plant, they're looking to regain the costs, and apparently they've lost some, Cohasset has diverted some of their sewer to their own plant, so they're losing some money there, and they're trying to regain those costs. So they couldn't give me an actual percentage increase. I did talk with the, well, it's now the DPW superintendent over there, and he's part of the, it's Jim Dow, and he told me to keep it at 30%, so I did. They are supposed to give it an actual percentage 90 days before our town meeting, so hopefully it will be lower than that, but.
So we don't have a lot of discretion here. They have the plant, we need to send it through to the plant, we can't send it anywhere else.
We cannot.
And, you know, they can change the price on us periodically, and they did a couple of years ago, when they had some significant problems over there. It is what it is.
So Randy, where are we going from? The 30% is something that we're not firm on, but that's what you were told to have pegged at?
Yes.
Where are we coming from?
Well, let me give you a little history. Two years ago, they told me it was going to be around the 16%, I put in for 18%, and it ended up being 27%. So basically, I had to scramble and find the funds in order to cover the budget, which I did. Last year, the same thing basically happened. This year, they told me a lower percentage, I put in for 30%, and I was just about right. I had to, again, scramble and come up with some funds, so I put in another 30% for this year. You know, we'll see what happens.
So, and we have absolutely no options?
Uh, no, no. It's all part of the intermunicipal agreement.
Unless we build our own.
Unless we build our own for that. Well, we have two systems, one, the North Sewer District, which goes to the MWRA, and the Ware Sewer District, which goes to HALL. So those are our options at this point.
Are the costs that HALL imposes on the town, is that just passed on to the users of that particular?
Yes, it's all rate-based.
And how big is the basket there? How many neighborhoods we talk, how is this, 1,000, 1,500, 2,000?
Yeah, maybe 200, I'm not.
Ware River 1 was 140, and I think Ware River 2 was about 60 to 70.
Yeah, I'm not, I know we're just about at capacity, though. We do it by bedrooms, and there's a new development that just went in. We're, we do it by bedrooms, and there's a new development that just went in.
So, they set a limit?
When we originally negotiated the agreement, we bought a capacity amount of volume. But the pricing structure has always been that Hull has the ability to charge us their cost of operations. They had a significant problem with their plant a couple of years ago, required significant improvements, and that's what we're seeing here is the tail run from that.
Okay. We share the pain.
We're sharing the pain.
Okay. So, just, and again, I don't know very much about this area as we're talking about it. But so, MWRA, North Hingham, they have their own assessment?
Yes.
And there's no ability, in terms of the Ware River-Hull connection, to shift that over at all to...
Well, in the past, the rates were done separately, depending on the costs. And they became so close together that the commission decided to go with one rate structure. So, we do it, we do the rates separately, and they are still so close that we, the commission's decided to keep it as one rate structure to make it easier for everyone.
They're close, meaning the amount?
And the rates, the amount of rates.
And the only reason I call my attention is I was hearing 10% last year, 8% for the MWRA, and then I'm hearing 30%.
Big repair. So, if you go back over time, though, and you look at the Hull rates, you know, you didn't see those kind of increases five, six years ago. No, no. This has been a product of the plant, I mean, I think they had a plant shut down completely two years ago. Yeah, basically went under water. And so, that, those repairs and that cost structure has been passed on to us. In addition, Cohasset leaving has exacerbated their cost structure, so their costs are higher where they're only, you know, it's only them and us, so not much choice.
I mean, is it, is where we go set by someone other than us, or, I mean, are we obligated to go to Hull, or if there's...
There is no other place to go.
No, well, that's why I asked you with the...
We'd have to build a piping structure to send it to MWRA, for example.
Got it.
Which would include pump stations and forced mains because we'd have to go over the hills. And MWRA isn't looking for any more capacity.
Right. And it may not, maybe cost...
Then we'd have to buy into them because they'd want us to probably upgrade their pump station that goes out to Deer Island.
I was trying to get a little background. I get it. Yep, thank you.
No, it's something that we're stuck on.
For now, yeah. Yeah. You know, Randy, I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Seriously. You know, I was with someone today, and they remarked on just, you know, how clean the streets and, you know, the public landscape was and is. And that's a sentiment that I share and I enjoy. So, thank you very much. Thank you to your...
Appreciate it.
And I call it the highway department, but it's the Department of Public Works. So, I just appreciate that.
Thank you.
You and your team are, you have a lot of territory to cover, a lot of, you know, a lot of ground to cover. And, you know, while all of our departments are very public-facing, yours more than many. And, you know, whether it's trees and roads and all kinds of other things and, you know, it's...
Everything.
It's tough to maintain, it's tough to maintain a town of this size and this age, and you and your team do a great job, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Great. Excellent. Thank you.
Have a good holiday. You, too.
All right. Our next budget is community planning, and we'll ask Mary Savard to join us. Welcome. The community planning budget in summary appears on page, Roman numeral nine, and in detail on page 29. I'll let Mary go through her budget for you. I'll just point out that the request came in at $807,298 with an additional request of $50,000 for a housing coordinator, which I have recommended. Total budget of $857,298, $46,507 year-over-year. Without the additional request, you can obviously tell that the budget would have gone down year-over-year. And the request was started up at my office. Mary graciously decided to accept it and work through it.
Hi, Mary.
Good evening. We just have a couple minor changes in our budget that I'd like to highlight for you. And first of all, underneath the salaries, every year when I go to advisory, we have a conversation about the revolving fund and could we shift more of the burden to the revolving fund or not. And the past several years, I've said certainly we will look into using that. And this decrease in salaries reflects a shift of funding five hours of the administrative secretary and the building inspector out of the revolving fund. And so, that would account for approximately $20,342 shift of salary money from general fund to revolving fund. So, that was, that accounts for the reduction up there minus the additional request. Otherwise, this budget includes some fairly modest requests for increases. Office supplies, we've requested a $415 increase. Vehicle fuel, we've requested $360. In-state travel, we've requested $2,000 increase. And that's the line that pays for the inspector's gasoline. That cost continues to go up. We've requested a minor increase of $353 in dues, $1,259 in postage, and $1,000 in advertising. So, for expenses, that totals $5,387. As Ted has mentioned, there is a request for $50,000 for an affordable housing specialist. It seems that a great deal of energy and discussion has been around affordable housing in the past year, year and a half. The intent of this new position is to add capacity around how we manage affordable housing in town as well as the subsidized housing inventory. This position would do tasks that aren't being done now, or perhaps could be done more consistently or thoroughly moving forward. Potential duties would be the annual certification of the local action units. We need to reach out to them every year and just verify that they're still eligible for inclusion on the SHI. It would prepare the biennial SHI report, help process LIP paperwork. And another gap we feel in service is that when some of the local action units turn over, when they're transferred, we feel that those sellers could benefit from more staff support. How do they move forward? Is the property going to an income-eligible buyer? We need to be sure that we provide support during these transactions so that those units remain eligible for inclusion on the SHI. And also because those property owners may not hire a real estate agent. They may need a little additional support. So, we feel that's...
And I think, Mary, if I could just add, you can lose, as you pointed out, you can lose some of the single-family units. And there's a time period where if someone wants to sell them, if you don't act in a timely fashion, we could lose any unit. And that's occurred here, where we've had the Affordable Housing Trust jump in quickly to try to stop that.
Can I just ask a question about that? When we, you know, when there's new affordable housing that comes on, there's a marketing, someone acts as the marketing agent. Excuse me. Does that marketing agent's responsibility only fall within the initial marketing of the unit? Or are they responsible for future marketing if the unit turns over?
I know they're responsible initially. I think it's determined whether or not you engage them on the second or future ones. And so...
And frequently, that doesn't happen. Is it part of, I mean...
And it will be part of this person's responsibility.
But is it, I guess what I'm saying is, is it part of, so, you know, we have a marketing agent for a unit at Ridgewood Crossing. So, if that unit were to turn over, does the, does the group that is responsible for, are they, do they continue as the marketing agent?
Not necessarily.
But should they?
Each time you have to go through that cycle and decide who you're going to use for the marketing agent.
Okay.
The developer does that, the owner does that.
So, in other words, when you take on the responsibility of the marketing agent, it's for the marketing, that particular transaction?
Correct. And you're compensated accordingly for that transaction. One of the things that I'm hoping this position will help is, we get calls frequently from folks wanting to access affordable units, Hingham residents, not really understanding the process, not understanding what's out there. And so, this position is hopefully going to try to create a little more sunshine in that area so that people know what units are available in town and how to access through them. And, you know, we just haven't had the resources to do this and done by the developers.
Is this, I know, I know sometimes in years past, when we've, when we've looked at increasing head count and adding personnel, sometimes we've had circumstances where the work, where we can sort of do it over two years, where we initially fund the position as part-time, which also means that it doesn't require benefits, and then kind of see how that goes and maybe migrate to full-time. Is that something we could contemplate for this position?
I think we are. I don't believe we're expecting $50,000 is going to cover this position on a full-time basis.
Okay. So, the $50,000 is...
I don't think you're going to hire someone for $50,000 on a full-time basis to do this position, this kind of work caliber work. Our expectation is part-time.
So, this is a 20 out, the $50,000 represents 20 hours?
I'm not sure we have it narrowed down to the exact number of hours yet.
Okay.
The job description is just been finished this afternoon, I believe. David Basel is working on that with the personnel board. So, as soon as we get that job description, we see exactly what the rate is, we'll adjust this accordingly.
I'm sorry, we're going to adjust it?
Adjust the budget request accordingly to make sure that it's in agreement with the personnel board's rating of what they think the position will pay.
We're looking for a full-time person.
No, my understanding is we're going to look for a, well, I know that Mary has indicated a full-time position in her budget. I don't know if we're going to be able to get a full-time position for $50,000. I suspect that we'll be using, doing what Mary had suggested, had pointed out, a part-time budget position and, you know, maybe growing into a full-time over time. But I've often used the philosophy that if you start part-time, you can add the full-time. If you start full-time, it's awful hard to go back to part-time. So...
I'd like to thank the Community Planning Department for the work and support given to the South Hingham Working Group, as well as your work in the square. Truly appreciate that.
I will pass that along. Thank you.
Very much.
I would just say it's typical of different departments, but yours in particular, that there's so much work that goes on beyond the normal routine. So, we do appreciate everything you folks do.
Thank you, Mary.
Next budget is the library budget. See the library director and the library treasurer. The library budget appears on page 129 of your budget book. And in detail, the summary appears on page, Roman numeral 12. The budget request came in at $1,696,699. It represented a $31,000, $36 change year-over-year, a 1.86% increase. And I have recommended that budget to you.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for taking time to talk with us tonight about our library's budget. We have prepared a level services budget for fiscal '18 with no new requests for additional funding. Our budget reflects our needs in running, maintaining, and operating a library, which, as you know, is a well-used resource in the community. Last year alone, we loaned over 350,000 books, movies, and music, had nearly 17,000 people attend library lectures and programs, and had over 247,000 people walk through our doors for an average of over 1,000 people per day. It's important also to mention that the fiscal '18 operating budget that we are presenting to you is not the complete operating budget, as additional funds are provided by the library trustees. And the final trustees' budget is produced and voted on in May by the trustees. This year, the trustees are expected to contribute approximately $254,000 to the operating budget, with these funds generated from sources such as the annual drive fundraiser, which is currently going on now, and thank you for all who have contributed, bookstore and fine revenue, principal and interest from the library's endowment, and state aid. So, if we turn our attention to the fiscal '18 operating budget, you will note that most line items show a 0% increase from the fiscal '17 budget. Items that do show a change from last year include library salaries for a total amount of $1,365,837, which is an increase of 1.84% or $24,708 over the fiscal '17 total of This amount includes step increases and longevity, but does not include contracted union increases because the contract expires on June 30th and hasn't been renegotiated. Also, this line does not include non-union increases. These will be included in Article 4 in the town warrant. Other changes from last year include an increase of $1,370 or 5.73% to repair and maintenance building for fiscal '18 total of $25,270, up from $23,900 in fiscal '17. This increase is based upon a five-year rolling average of actual costs, and is necessary to cover ongoing costs related to repair and maintenance of an aging building. There's also $50 or 4% to repair and septic for '18 for a total of $1,300, up from $1,250 in '17. This increase covers the increased cost of services for an additional pumping. $300 or 10.35% for computer supplies to cover the increased costs of toner and paper purchases for coffee machines for a total of $3,200, up from $2,917. $300 or 3.0% for custodial supplies to cover the increased costs of purchases like paper goods and cleaning products for a total of $10,300, up from $10,000 in '17. $200 or 2.27% for book processing supplies to cover increases in the cost of purchases for mending books and also preparing new books to put on the shelves for a total of $9,000, up from $8,800 in '17. $4,656 or 12.81% for books and periodicals to cover the amount needed to maintain compliance with state aid guidelines for materials purchases for a total of $40,990, up from $36,334 in fiscal '17. These funds are used towards the purchase of books, periodicals, ebooks, movies, music, digital content. And it also worth noting that the town only provides funding for a portion of the library's total materials budget, and that the library trustees this year are expected to contribute over $212,000 towards these material purchases for the library in order to meet the state aid guidelines. There's also $1,752 or 3.99% for OCLN network assessment. This is a required old colony library network assessment fee, which is our portion that we must pay as a member library in order to have reciprocal loaning and borrowing privileges among area libraries, as well as the use of shared catalog and network computers, systems, and services totaling $45,708 in fiscal '18, up from $43,956 in '17. There is also a 30.3% decrease of $2,300 in the furniture and equipment line, which reflects only the purchases we feel we need to make this year, which include various tools and outdoor equipment in need of replacement, such as a hedge trimmer, hot water carpet extractor, drill, and hand tools for fiscal '18 total of $5,300, down from $7,600 in fiscal '17. Our total operating budget for fiscal '18 as presented is $1,696,699 for a total increase of 1.86% over the previous fiscal year total of $1,665,663. Of this increase, 1.84% is for total salaries and 1.95% is for total expenses. This budget reflects our sincere efforts to present a level services budget with only modest but necessary increases. And that's all the changes. Do you have any questions for me?
So, this past year, in the budget, we allowed some funding for Sunday hours in June.
Yes.
What was the experience with having the library open on Sundays in June?
That was fabulous. That was, you know, I have to say, what a gift it was to be able to stay open because every time we closed and, you know, school was still going on, people are, you know, the weather's getting nice, people want to go out. And it'd always be sad that we weren't there on the libraries anymore, you know, why do you close so early? And the library was well-used. I did not bring the numbers, but it was well-used till the end of the year. We kept hearing just from patrons saying, "I'm so happy you're open. I'm so happy you're open." So, it couldn't have been a better thing to have done for people.
And I appreciate that nights of finals week, I think you stayed open later hours.
We did.
And I think that was... I think that was, that was a nice thing, too.
Yes, that was popular. We're going to do that again, just because we hate kicking the kids out at nine when you know they're going to go home and study till 11, so.
Yeah, and, and I would also, I would imagine, too, that in June, that, that on Sundays, you not only have students in there, but, but also just other patrons who, you know, it's, it's always tough when the library's closed on Sundays in the summer.
For everybody, absolutely.
Well, one other question, just the status of the roof project. I realize it's not part of the budget, but it's...
No, it's a question on everybody's mind, yes. We have a, we're hoping to wrap it up in December, they're in the, the final leg, it's about two-thirds done right now. There was a little delay because we're waiting for a skylight to be delivered, that got delayed, it's not coming until mid-December. So, you know, once we get that, they get that in, they can finish the piping around it and should wrap up within a week or so after that, so.
And Lynda, is it like finished to the point where if we get a couple inches of snow sometime in the next couple weeks, you're...
Yeah, right now, it has the, it has, you know, like a rubber roof on it, so for the most part, that's almost completed except for around the skylight. And what they're doing now is, is the piping for all the HVAC, and then they have to get the electrical up there, so. But for the watertight part, we should be, we should be all set, so for long, long, I know, knock on wood, for a long, long time, so.
Thank you.
No, thank you for asking, it's, it's a great question. And I do appreciate everyone's patience, because as with most construction projects, you hope it gets done on time, and then there's always a little delay, little delay, and I have to say, everyone who's come to the library has been absolutely wonderful. I haven't heard one complaint, not one, for the whole thing. Everyone comes in and they said, "Oh, I'm so happy that the library roof isn't leaking anymore," and they don't mind the banging or the inconvenience, so it's been, you know, it was a big ask on the town, but with big returns, so, so I do have to thank you all for supporting us with that. Ed, do you have anything to add? I'm not ignoring you.
No, I can't, no, no. I have a question.
Yes.
What, what's the condition of the septic system?
So the condition of the septic system, for the grant that we're working on right now, we just had Margetts out to take a look at it, and we have a little more work to look at, but it needs some minor repairs. It's not in bad shape right now. The soils around it are really good, we have two, I don't know how much details you want, but we have two systems actually, not just one, and there's a diverter. So one was put in in '66, one was put in in '80. So what happens is we just run one system at a time, and then we switch it, you know, this one we just switched last week, and it was five years in use before we switched it. So it gives the leaching field a time to rest before we move it over. Because of the age, we were concerned, and there, there are some repairs that need to be made, but as for replacement, we are hopeful, and this is maybe early to, don't, you know, don't quote me on this, but it looks like we may be okay if we just maintain it a little further. So fingers crossed, this is what we're hoping is the final result of that.
Okay.
Which would be great news for all of us.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So much. All right, well, thank you for coming in, thank you for updating us.
Thank you for having us.
All your good work. Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, and the next budget is the Veterans Services, J.R. Hall and Celebrations. Start out with the Veterans Budget. Veterans Budget appears on page 119 and detail, and in summary appears on page, Roman numeral 12. The budget was requested at $365,379, a 293, $2,930, $993 increase, about a .83% increase. And I'll let Keith go through the details of that.
Thank you, Ted. Chairman, members of the board. With me tonight is Mrs. Lisa Potts, the Veterans Benefits Administrator, as we worked on this budget together this year. In the military, we like to use acronyms. This acronym's a little bit of a play on words, it's called the bluff. So the bluff means the bottom line up front, which I'll give you, and Ted just spoke about. The overall department budget reflects a .83, that's $2,993 real dollars that we're asking for, and I'll get into the particulars of why. But due to this small increase is, and which I must mention, is, is because of the large number of volunteers by local veterans, that helps us defray the real costs, i.e. the labor, the transportation, goods, et cetera. In addition to a group policy, healthcare policy that we're required to have under, under law, to provide for our veterans and our qualified dependents, it's an insurance policy that was implemented by Ms. Potts over three years ago. This year alone, that healthcare cost only saw a 15% increase, whereas nationally, that same number is on average about 21%. So we, we're very fortunate to have that in place, and now I'll go over where the, the lion's share of the, the dollars or the real dollars, which is $2,724, is overall 2.8% increase, is due to the calculated compensation worksheet. So those are the step raises for, for Lisa and I for that fiscal year. The expenses, which is technically all that the Department of Veterans Services, that's Lisa and I, control, or we like to refer to it as the triple B, which is the beans, bullets, and Band-Aids. Those are the things that we use, the paper clips, the pens, et cetera. Those are the, really the only things that I control. Overall, we're looking for a decimal one, decimal 1% increase. R&amp;M grounds shows a huge increase this year, I think is huge, is over 17%, because we were, we were able to reallocate the funding mechanism for the U.S. flags. Those are the small grave marker flags that you commonly see at the six cemeteries around town, which were required to have placed by law under mass general law every Memorial Day. We were able to move that into miscellaneous supplies and put that into the benefits package, roll that into the benefits package, because that, that particular line item is refunded, as is all of, everything else except my budget, which was where this fell, the expenses part. That's refunded by the state at 75%. So we felt that it has a drop-down already. The VISM system, that's the state system that we use, that we're, we fall under, that's how we get that reallocation of funds, that 75-25 split. So by putting it in there, it truly reflects where it needs to be, it needs to be in benefits. That's a benefit that this state provides for our GSEs veterans. Moving on, benefits overall, again, about a tenth of a percent increase, that's $263 real dollars. Why? About a 19% reduction in ordinary allowances reflecting a decline in the current chapter 115 population due to relocation, transition to nursing home care, and ultimately death of the aging veterans population that we have statewide. Mostly young returning veterans are covered under the VA healthcare system, and they have educational benefits, which equals real dollars to income for them. So they are not as much dependent as we, as, as those that are, that are senior citizens that can't bridge that gap. And that's what this program is designed to do, to give them a quality of life that they, they deserve. We also saw a 100% decrease in the hospitalization line item. This is a line item we've carried on our budget for many, many years. I've talked to the town accountant about it. We put that again into the medical attention and supplies. We now have that drop-down for ambulances. We used to set aside this hospitalization fund, we called it, of about $3,000, and if we think of that in real dollars, that's about two ambulance trips. So we kind of used to set that aside, hey, hoping, knock on wood, that we weren't going to have any of our, our elderly or veterans need that service. We no longer need it, we can roll it into the miscellaneous supplies category, again, falling under that VISM system, making it a true, tuning that knob, if you will, a little bit, a little bit deeper. Let's see, a new line, so that new line item that I spoke about in benefits would actually be a 28% increase in that line, but in real dollars, substantially, substantially low. It's roughly about, when I say it's roughly about, a little less than $3,000. What that is, is our, our last year's run rate was 17 gross of flags. Those are the flags that we put out, as again, required by law to put out into the cemeteries. And this year alone, we estimate that we're going to need 21 gross, just to keep up with that demand, again, due to the aging population of our veterans who, who are succumbing. So capital outlay, we, good to hear, we have no capital outlay requests, and if pending any questions, that's the level services budget that was prepared.
So a lot of attention is paid by Keith and Lisa on the veterans' benefits, it's the bulk of their budget. It's important to get those service deliveries out, it's important for you to know that while they can manage things like the healthcare initiatives and finding a better place to buy something, they can't imagine, they can't manage not buying it. If the demand is there, they are obligated by law to provide these benefits, if not by conscience. And, and so I think it's important to note that this budget will go up and down from time to time, regardless of the efforts, good efforts in that department. I don't want people to feel as this comes back, we could see this number escalate. And I hope, I hope it does, quite honestly. And when it's decreasing, it means we're really, as Keith says, we're losing our veterans.
So again, just to recap, that 260,000 some odd dollars is, is just our best guess, our run rate of what we have now, what we ran in the first quarter, what we expect to see moving forward. The close to $6,000 is the only thing that I can control, that if you said, if you absolutely said, "I need you to reduce," then I would, you know, do without pens, you know, we... But the bulk of the budget, the lion's share is really, as Ted mentioned, is, it's uncontrollable, and it's just through formularies that we calculate that.
I know that each of you go down to the veterans' office on a regular basis, I'm sure you see the same thing I see. There's never a time that I've been down there, really, then it's not just Lisa and Keith, but someone else is in that office. That other person who's in the office is not being paid. A lot of times I go down there and Keith and Lisa aren't there. Keith's off somewhere dealing with, you know, the military obligations he has, and Lisa might be off for a day, and there's someone else in there, and we're not paying them. So the office is regularly manned by people who we're not paying. And this is, I think, one of the reasons why we can get out there and, and help that community so extensively.
And not only are we grateful to all of the volunteers who, who commit to doing that, but, you know, it's also evident at a lot of the events that, that we get invited to as a board, that both of you have cultivated really strong relationships with the veterans in our community. And it's, it's really, it's so tremendous to see, and you are both such valued resources to the veterans' community in many different ways, and we're just so grateful for, for not just the work you do, but, but the way you do it. And it's obvious that people count on you, and they trust you, and they value the hard work that you're doing, so thank you for that.
Thank you. So do you want me to roll into the next budget, which is celebrations? Are there questions pending?
I just was going to echo up, there's no sense that...
Celebrations, page 119, I'm sorry, page 144.
Mr. Chairman?
At your leisure, sir.
The celebrations budget, as you can see, 1.175% increase, what is that, 205 real dollars? Where do we come up with that? That's our increase in normal goods, okay? So for those events, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, those are our wreaths, those are our flowers, that's the luncheon, that's the breakfast, those are those things, those commodities, again, that we can't control, that we've built in a small percentage increase that we think will take care of that, our best guess on, on what that will be moving forward. The top portion of that structure, so it's Memorial and Veterans Day that we cover, 4th of July, which is not managed by the Veterans Service Office, that is actually handled through first responders, it's used as...
This is police and fire details that we hire for the festivities.
So although that falls within the purviews or the total bottom line of that budget, I actually don't, we cannot control that portion of it.
I'll just comment, I, Keith, I, you know, without repeating what Mary said, it made me think about upcoming and very much future. You know, there's, there's always talk about ways of being able to show our pride for our military and for the town, and I know there's some plans coming up for Memorial Day, and this, obviously, we've had a very successful effort with flags being, you know, posted around the community, and it just shows, you know, our true colors, literally, in terms of what we're all about. So it makes me feel good, and anything we can do to help, as always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you sincerely very much, both of you, for the fine work that you do. I'm not going to replow the same ground, but I think you bring a lot of pride and patriotism to the work you do, and you're a credit to the town, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board.
Paul, do you mind if I jump in real quick? I just want to throw one thing out, so I don't say a lot during a lot of these meetings, I sit back. I've been in Hingham for a little under a year now, and there's a lot of things I can tell you that set Hingham apart, but that department is first and, first and foremost. It's not common. I don't know if, a lot of people have spent a lot of time in Hingham, and may think that that's the norm. It's not. I've been around the state, I've been around in other towns, and what Keith and Lisa do is, is extraordinary, to say the least, so.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Tom.
Second that.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Actually, Keith no longer takes care of the J.R. Hall budget, right? We're going to have the trustees come up?
They're going to come up, I'm going to sit here so they don't get lonely.
Make sure they don't get too lost in the wilderness. Don't go straight too far. Everybody wants the senior chief with them. So we have two of the trustees, Mr. Beal and...
Frank Shealan as well.
Pardon me?
Frank Shealan is here as well.
Frank Shealan and Scott. So your, J.R., your grand Army Hall operating budget appears on page 49. The budget request came in at $14,500, which was the budget the previous year, and I recommended that budget.
So again, the, the overall, it's a level, not only is it a level services budget, it's level funded this year. And how did we accomplish that was through many different avenues, which I will mention now. The R&amp;M building, or the grounds, the maintenance of the grounds was a regular increase, 2%. Again, that's those things that we need to, need to do to keep the hall updated. What we, what you don't see, or why that stayed at the level funded, is for the following reasons. We took about a negative 40% or a cut in the electric fuels, utilities worksheet price usage. The reason we did that was to be able to better fine-tune what we've used in the past historically, to turn that knob down to where it, where it should be, and we've, we've seen that, or we're, we're hoping, by using the worksheet put together by the town accountant, that, that we're going to fall within those parameters. We also had a 100% line item decrease in heating oil, reflecting the conversion to natural gas. Although that's a positive for us, it could be a negative for the town as well. We suffered a catastrophic failure of the boiler at that location. It was recommended by the service contract that we had, they, they've been servicing that, I think, since, since I was elected to the board over 22 years ago. So there's, this is a vendor that we've had, a longtime vendor, who said, "Hey, guess what? Believe it or not, that boiler's no longer made, I would actually have to send that out to be forged and have somebody manufacture that part, and then what are you going to do next year?" My advice to you is, we've just installed AC under a capital outlay, which we had last year. I can easily make that gas conversion, so it runs both. I highly suggest you move into that vein. We had a long discussion with Tom Mayo, we looked at the pros and cons of it, and we decided to move forward with installing the natural gas, which would create a new line item of accounting in the unit system for us, would remove the oil as a utility and put in natural gas. The other support, which has been increased to cover uncertainties associated with the first-time usage of that gas as well. Since there was no historical data on what we would use as a heating mechanism, I got together with Sue Nicholson, the town accountant. She basically said to me, "What did you use last year?" I told her the dollar amount, which was 2,000. Here it says 3, I think your book says 2,008, I'll have to verify, there may be some sort of a typo there, but $2,000 was used. She had the unit price, which is locked in at 1.468. Hey, do the reverse math, and I'm going to tell you that you're going to use 1,981 DTH, that's the unit of gas that, that's used. She said typically that's what's happened if someone converts like that. There's no historical data to use, go with the money you used for heating last year, it's typical that you'll use the same amount. The fiscal year encumbrance... The fiscal year encumbrance of last year, we encumbered over $6,000 to make that boiler upgrade. We took that money that was left over in the budget last year, encumbered it, put it towards us installing that boiler since this fall.
Yes.
And we still have an outstanding debt of about $2,700 roughly. And historically, that is, we'll be able to get that out of the operating costs. So I'll be able to take that possibly out of repair and maintenance, possibly on another line item, but the bottom line will be that I predict that we should be in the black. Again, I won't really know, depends on what kind of winter we have, no historical data on the heating system. By March, I should be able to signal, you know, worst case, that if we did need a reserve fund transfer of some kind, it would be in the upwards of an amount of about $3,000. I don't see that, I don't see that happening right now. I'll be able to have a better sight picture moving forward. So again, as I mentioned, completely level service and level funded. We do have capital outlay in the tune of about $6,200. That was for the paving of the parking lot at the bottom of the lot, which now provides us more spaces, more adequate ways to get food and supplies in for those meetings that is held there by the Legion and the VFW. Eagle Scout Corps uses that as well. Right now, we're also offering our services to the Congregational Church. They're holding Sunday School down there as well, so the base code has been put on by the contractor that was awarded the, was awarded the contract and should be finished in the spring, correct?
Yes.
And then we'll make a determination, we will pay him as well. Again, that was capital outlay, so that's pretty much paid for itself, so.
Questions for Michael?
If we could maybe add a couple of things that kinda flavor this, is that we have, Keith mentioned, the Congo Church has been doing the renovations. And as a good neighbor, we went to them and said, you know, they have the consignment, "Is there something we can do to assist you in your misplaced..." And it turned out to be their Sunday School. So they come in on Sundays and what we anticipate is, is we have, they will cover the utility costs so that we're a watch. But we don't do a lot outside of that. We do the scout quota waters and the other meetings, and so it's a good thing. But it was a good neighbor thing to do, to provide that, we believe, for the neighborhood. We also, we took a huge risk and loaned our uniform display to a fundraiser event for the New England Center and Home for Veterans in Court Street in Boston for their annual exterior, external fundraiser. And we have pictures floating around. It was nothing really coordinated, but it became the center of the reception area. They, it was unbelievable. They sent down Iron Mountain to move all the goods. I met them at 6:00 in the morning where they packaged up all of the uniforms, took them into the World Trade Center. I met them again at midnight. When they returned on the same day, they followed all of the, and it was phenomenal. It was phenomenal for what it did for the G.A.R. We got a lot of exposure in that group. And it was a center of a $500,000 fundraiser for the New England Center and Home for Veterans. We're looking into trying to enhance the museum qualities of the G.A.R., trying to work out how we can have it open for some time, how we can coordinate that. And that will be coordination with the Veterans Office and a workoff program for veterans. We may be able to coordinate that. So those are the things we're kinda trying to do to enhance the history of the building. There's still a lot of people in town that don't know what the building is. They drive by it constantly, but it's to enhance it for the values. The paving and the parking lot, as Keith told you, will also provide us the capability to be able to have a social area, picnic benches or whatever, so we can, you know, do programs with veterans and have an area that's more easily maintained. The air conditioning and all will enhance the buildings and the protection and quality of all the memorabilia we have in there, which is actually priceless. The gas gave us two things. It gave us gas, a new service that was brought in from Main Street. We eliminated the failed boiler. So the boiler went away, the fuel tank went away. And the little niche where the fuel tank was is now the new boiler. It's opened up 2/3 of the room for much-needed secure storage that we don't have today for items. So it's really, it's done a lot. The vendor, it's not coming cheaply, but the vendor has been there a long time. The vendor is committed, knows and understands what the G.A.R. is and what it does. They are Legion members in their own towns and all, and they have provided, they have kicked in a bunch of pro bono assistance, which they continue to do too. So we're looking very favorably there. But it enhances what we're able to do there on the small budget that we ask for.
This is one of those budgets where the dollars really go a long way and that works very hard. It's $14,500. It's a wonderful investment. Again, there are many volunteer hours that go behind the G.A.R. Hall and we're so appreciative. On a personal note, I would thank you for making the G.A.R. Hall available for the Eagle Courts of Honor. It just makes the ceremony more significant. And one thing I'd ask you to think about, you know, with all the Eagle Scouts and the Scouts going through, many of them are looking for Eagle Scout projects.
We do.
And I would say that if there are, you know, if there's a way to get some things done that could, that could help you, that could help the Hall and that could help a young scout in the community, everybody can win from that, so, you know.
Through Ernie Sofis, continuation, this kinda stuff, through our historian, Ernie Sofis, he's coordinated with the library. So about May 15th, we're gonna move a collection of the uniforms into the main entrance area of the library, which will be on display there through Memorial Day.
Great idea.
Another associated memorabilia there. And I met with Ernie and they were excited. We're excited. And building off of that now, there's a new veterans bookstore that just opened up down in Situ, in Egypt Variety General Store. And with that, we're gonna see if we can link into them to get some of their authors here during that time with the library and maybe to do some readings and some, to bring attention to that, to the coordination. So we see a lot of support from our town departments. Highway Department supports us tremendously in the day-to-day, you know, hauling out trash and helping us open the building when the times, you know. Jeff Pezy has really, really done a lot to assist us in those ways. And I gotta tell you that the person that is most, mostly there doing most of the behind scene things is Scott. Scott's there at 7:00 on Sunday mornings to unlock that door and disable the alarm so that we don't set the alarm off when the kids come in for Sunday School. He's there for, he opens up for the events. And we get the organizations who use the all to set it up, change how they need it and reset it. So we use their own labor and to try to do that, so it's...
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thanks for the good work that you do. I really like the idea of a museum offering. I think the history of the town, people who've served in uniform, displayed as it is, and the Scouts' interaction with that history and that place has started to manifest itself in different ways. You know, at the ceremony earlier this week, I have to tell you, I really felt good seeing those high school young men standing there as part of the ceremony, participating in it. That, I think, is a very positive message and I truly appreciate that happening, so thank you very much.
Good.
Good night.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Night.
Thanks, Lisa.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the budget presentation for tonight. There'll be further budgets. We're gonna take some votes at this point in time. We have a vote with respect to signing the agreement for a Liberty Chevrolet, with Liberty Chevrolet, for 2017 Chevrolet full-size K2-500 four-by-four Silverado pickup in the amount of $38,308. And I take it this is from the Highway Department?
And this doesn't need to be in front of you, but it is today, so we'll allow it. Somebody move.
Sure, I'll move to sign the agreement with Liberty Chevrolet for 2017 Chevrolet full-size K2-500 four-by-four Silverado pickup in the amount of $39,308.04.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. The next issue is to authorize Schools John Ferris to act as the principal executive officer for the purposes of submitting documents to the Mass. Department of Environmental Protection.
This is a process change. DEP requires the board that oversees the property, in this case you, to authorize John to continue signing the documents that he's been signing for the better part of 10 years. John manages the fuel depot and includes all aspects of that management, filling, maintaining, monitoring, making sure the underground tanks, the tanks rather, I don't think, the tanks are appropriately maintained.
Motion?
I've offered it up for a motion, so, so moved?
Oh, so moved, sorry.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We now enter into that part of the evening where we have a long list of license renewals and rather than read them out painfully, I propose that we vote to renew the following annual common victualer slash all alcoholic, comma, common victualer slash wines and malt beverages, comma, retail package goods store, all alcoholic and retail package goods stores, wine and malt beverage license for the entities that appear on the vote list of December 8, 2016, which will be identified in their entirety in the minutes generated by this vote.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a similar motion with respect to the common victualer all alcoholic club for the four entities identified in the vote list of December 8, 2016, which will appear in its entirety in the minutes reflecting this vote.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Same with respect to the common victualer wine and malt beverages, general on-premises. There are four entities identified, which will appear in the minutes of this meeting reflecting this vote.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to renew the common victualer wine and malt beverages for the Hingham Yard Club to 11 Don Arav, James Randall manager.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to renew the retail package goods store all alcoholic licenses for the six entities identified in the vote list of December 8, 2016, which shall appear in the minutes in their entirety.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor? Aye. Same, I'll entertain a motion to approve the licenses with respect to the retail package goods store wines and malt beverages for the five entities listed in the December 8, 2016 vote list, which shall appear in its entirety in the minutes of this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor? Aye. I will entertain a motion to renew the Class 1 seller's agent license for the six entities listed in the December 8, 2016 vote list. Such license expiring...
Five Class Ones.
Five Class Ones. Is it 2018 or is it 2017?
17.
Expiring January 1, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor? Aye.
We have two Class Twos.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the two Class Two license for the entities that appear in the December 8, 2016 vote list, which shall appear in its entirety in the minutes reflecting this vote. These licenses are likewise for one year and will expire on January 1, 2017, although it strikes me it should be 2018, but...
Are they set to expire or are they, is it obviously...
The license expires. It's expiring January 1 of 17.
We'll just continue with...
Okay, all right.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
I will entertain, you know, we'll just work through this.
You have, the next one, you have, I'm sorry, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. You have 10 annual, I'm sorry, you have nine annual weekday entertainment licenses.
You know, just for the benefit of the audience, I'll identify who they are. Kay's Harbor Corporation, DBA Stars, and Eat Well Tosca, Asian Fusion, Gourmet Garden, B.E. &amp; E, DBA The Snug, Weber Development, DBA Scarlet Oak, Vista Verde Corp., DBA Raphael's, Ocean Kai, Legal Sea Foods, DBA Legal Sea Bar, Cog Shell Group, DBA Crow's Landing, 415 Whiting Inc., DBA The Quarry. Let's take a vote on that. Do I have a motion to renew that?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
And would those motions be according to the hours set for engagement?
And the conditions set out in the vote list of December 8, 2016, which shall be recorded verbatim in the minutes reflecting this vote. So we have a second on that?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is, these...
You have just three separate ones there.
Okay.
Do you want me to take the first?
Yeah, please.
I'll make a motion to renew the annual automatic amusement device license of Lima Sports, DBA SoSure Sports Center. This license is restricted to the seven games as follows. Prize Time, Fast and Furious, Cruising World, Tekken Tag, Cruising Exotica, and Who Done It.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to renew the annual entertainment licenses of Shipyard Ventures LLC, DBA Almanove, for small vocal musical groups to perform on its outdoor patio on Sundays during the hours of 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of annual entertainment license to Trident Restaurant Group, DBA Trident Raw Bar and Galley, for one to three musicians to perform on any one of the following days and times, Thursday through Sunday during the hours of 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and two flat-screen televisions and background music seven days per week.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
I just wanna clarify your vote for the Ocean Kai. It's indicated in your agenda as annual weekday entertainment, or weekend entertainment. However, there's a Thursday there, so it actually should say annual weekday entertainment.
All right.
Okay, so just so, if you're gonna put this in the record and it's gonna be the permanent part, we wanna make sure that correction is in there.
All right. Well, I'll move to amend the vote to reflect that we're voting to renew the annual weekday entertainment license of Ocean Kai Inc., DBA Ocean Kai, consisting of a one-person DJ and karaoke or two-to-five-person band on Thursday, Friday and Saturday from 9:00 p.m. to 12:45 a.m.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we went through rather quickly a lot of work that was performed by Sharon Perfetti, renewing these licenses and teeing them up for our vote and signing so. Just fine work, very detail-oriented and very well done, so thank you, Sharon, for At this point in time, we've reached kinda the end of the meeting. Kinda had... At this point in time, we've reached kind of the end of the meeting, kind of halfway through start of the year, the term. And I think that going forward into the new year, it might be helpful to kind of just take a snapshot at our goals and objectives, see how we're doing, whether we're meeting them, what we've accomplished, and what we'd like to do. Talk to the town administrator about doing that in the early part of January. I think that would be good for the three of us to kind of have a public chat about that. Ted, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
One thing I would, just so the board is aware and the public's aware, both Tom and I have spoken to two of you, Paul and Mary, about initiatives relative to looking for some type of a facility or resource for folks that were disaffected by your vote on the Bear Cove Park decision and leashes. And Tom has some background in this, and we'll start exploring some opportunities and avenues for you and have them back to you by the first of the year, or certainly by the first meeting where you take that matter up. I don't want you to think you're going to get it New Year's Eve.
Not going to be here New Year's Eve.
So on that point, Ted, I just want to let folks know that, and I appreciate that, is that I've talked to the chief, police chief, I've talked to a number of residents have different viewpoints, and I think it'll be a very helpful thing to get a dialogue going and if we can get some type of committee of these folks so they can actually meet and maybe come up with some options, whatever they may be. I think that'll be constructive, and I think that's something that will be a positive step in this, and where it leads us, I don't know. But I look forward to working with, I talked to Tom about it today, with Tom and my colleagues, hopefully in the next few weeks, if not at the very beginning of the year, to kind of get this thing moving along.
Okay. The one other thing, I'll come back to that if anyone has any questions for me, is you have in your package a fund balance memo?
Yes.
And I'm prepared to go over this with you. I'd be happy to go over it with you now, but I do think that there are a lot of folks in the community who would want to hear this, and maybe we can put this on as sort of the beginning of your budget process next week so we can start out with this in a more active setting. I think as you get to the end of the meeting, maybe people start to turn it off. So this is an important issue, and I know that a lot of people are interested in it.
Tom, is there anything you'd like to?
I'm good, thank you.
Ted?
Just a real quick thing. I'm sure there's a number of good things happening with the Christmas and the holiday season, but I was, had the good fortune of being able to go to the South Shore Country Club today, Hingham Police Association, and I believe Santa Claus was there as well. Put on a fantastic luncheon for the seniors in town, and I did miss the Christmas garling. I'm sure it was something, a sight to see. But I did spend some time, and people were dressed up in their sweaters and their few hats that they wear, and boy, you know, if it was anything that I could say was the Christmas spirit's alive and well in Hingham, and it was just a wonderful event, as it always is every year. And I want to thank Lieutenant Cochran, the Police Association, and our chief and our officers for volunteering their time to serve food to the seniors in Hingham. It's just a wonderful event all around.
Mary?
Nothing to add.
I have a few things. I'll try to keep it short because it's late, but the other night, there was a knock on the door, went to the door, and there was a wreath with, very well-decorated wreath, and had a couple of American flags in it, and it was a wreath with a note from the fifth grade CCD class from the Resurrection Church to all the Blue Star families in the town of Hingham. And my son is serving in uniform, so we were a recipient of that. I truly thank the fifth grade CCD class and the men and women that were part of making that happen. It's truly gratifying to have a family member serving in uniform during this time. It's, you know, Wednesday was December 7th. We had a Pearl Haba ceremony down at the shipyard at the LST Memorial, and it was very well-attended. And as I told Senior Chief German tonight, it was extremely gratifying to see the young men from the high school standing there as a part of the ceremony. That, to me, was uplifting. You know, the choice that many of our youth make to go to college kind of drowns out the service of the country that some of our younger citizens elect to take. And if you look in the Hingham Journal, thanks to Mary Ford, you'll see the editorial that lists those men and women who serve our country from this community. And that, to me, is inspiring. Patriotism isn't something you're born with, you acquire. I totally agree with that wholeheartedly. And I'm proud to be a part of this community, and I love participating in the ceremonies because of everything it means. And in line with that, I enjoyed a tradition, I think, that is going to grow on us. Mary and Paul and I were present last night at the Hingham Fire Department when Chief Robert Olson elevated one of the firefighters to the rank of lieutenant. It's a Lieutenant James Lambfrier, and I'm sorry, sir, if I've mispronounced your name. He's been on the department for nine years, and he's going up, he's getting a single trumpet on his lapel. And Kristen Appleby was appointed to replace David Damstra, who is retiring from service to this town after 40 years. He, last 21 years, he served as a fire prevention officer, working with the building department to ensure that the buildings that are constructed here can withstand fire in accordance with the code. It's a very, very serious position and one that we need and value. So good week for the town. We're going into the Christmas season. The budget is proceeding along. I thank you for your interest. I thank my colleagues for their continued efforts to serve the collective good. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and good night.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Aye.